Are we ready? Good evening and welcome to the October 22, 2025 Regular Hybrid Planning Session Meeting. I am Chair Thompson. Tonight's Hybrid Planning Commission meeting is being brought to you by Zoom. Welcome to all and thank you for joining us tonight. Commissioners, please have your microphones turned on for the roll call. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Chair Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Perez.
Here.
Commissioner Nice.
Here.
Vice Chair Gibson.
Here.
And Commissioner Accuse.
Here.
Thank you.
Our first item of business is public appearances. This is an opportunity for anyone to speak to the commission about issues of concern, except items requiring a public hearing, any quasi judicial matters, or campaign-related matters. I will note that there is one public hearing related to permanent regulations for temporary uses. That must be the old one.
My apologies, that should not be in your script. We do not have a public hearing tonight.
Oh, okay. So has anybody signed up for public appearances as of tonight?
Yes, we have two individuals that signed up, Amy Lavin and Jessica Clausen.
Okay. You'd like to go?
I'd like to remind speakers that you have three minutes to speak and we'll let you know when those three minutes are up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Amy Lavin and I live at 7835 Southeast 22nd Place. I've lived on Mercer Island for 38 years. I serve as CEO of the Strom Jewish Community Center of Greater Seattle. As quick background, for those that may not know, the Strom JCC strives to be the most open and welcoming community-centered Jewish organization in Puchette Sound, creating opportunities for profound connection for people of all generations. We reach nearly 30% of Mercer Island households with programs funded through programming fees and private philanthropy. We educate over 200 children at the J every day and hundreds more in the summer. We have the daily joy of watching dozens of high schoolers exercise alongside octogenarians and occasionally even a non-agenarian. We present dozens of cultural arts programs each year for the broad public and most nights of the week you can watch the Boot Boogie Babes kicking up their heels at the J. We are full of people living, connecting, and building community. I'm here tonight to voice extreme opposition to proposed docketing items 2, 3, 4, and potentially 5, as single-family zoning still applies to the J. Items 2 through 4 have been proposed by Matt Goldbach, who is specifically targeting them at the J in an apparent attempt to thwart our redevelopment plans on Mercer Island. Mr. Goldbach, who apparently bought his home 45 years after the J began operating on Mercer Island, has a history of trolling the perimeter of our property and attending family-focused events like Truck Day. His outsized focus on the J and our community is concerning, especially in today's climate, and the city should be concerned that his actions demand city resources to advance an agenda that borders on targeted hostility. Not only are Matt's proposed amendments bad policy and not in the best interest of the broader community, but they also fail to meet the docketing criteria of 19.15.250. I also want to publicly object to the planning commissions and Dan Thompson's apparent inclusion of docket item 4 in the omnibus amendment that you passed two weeks ago. Inclusion of this docket item into an unrelated omnibus ordinance is against public participation and comment goals and is against the code requirements that the planning commission and city must allow for docketing individual code requests. Their surprisingly similar proposals together target the Strom JCC and without proper visibility and community engagement eliminate efficient parking solutions that are environmentally sound and situated with the least amount of impact on the nearby residents. The J faces nearly the same aging issues that City Hall does and that are sought to be overcome by Prop 1. That said, in 2017, MI City Council made land use decisions with haste and without full consideration of the impacts. We have struggled since then, we have struggled to update our facility. The J and many other community organizations on the island are suffering from those unintended consequences. Please do not make the same mistake again. We implore you to vote no on items 2, 3, 4, and 5. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Clausen.
Chair Thompson, commission. I'm Jessie Clausen. I live at 6730 82nd Avenue Southeast. I'm both a resident and as it so happens, I have the privilege of also representing the Strom Jewish Community Center as a lady's attorney. I'm here tonight to voice strong objection to propose docket items 2 through 5. As Amy already stated, docket items 2, 3, 4 appear to be targeted specifically at the JCC for making future improvements or even maintaining its current facilities. That kind of targeted action undermines the fairness and neutrality we should expect from this process. More importantly, these proposals do not meet the docketing criteria laid out clearly in 1915.250. They are not consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, which explicitly encourages support for deeply rooted beneficial community institutions like the JCC. Far from supporting the public health, welfare, and safety of our community, these amendments would directly undermine it. The JCC is a critical community resource that contributes to exactly those values. Regarding docket item number 5 proposed by Chair Thompson, we also have concerns. As you know, the JCC is located within a single-family zoning designation and is judged fairly or not by those zoning criteria. The proposed change changes the way GFA is calculated on higher-ceilinged buildings, which would include the JCC. Finally, I want to echo Amy's concern regarding the action Chair Thompson took in relation to the recent omnibus bill. By including language that closely mirrors docket item 4, we believe the Chair effectively implemented a citizen amendment request outside the public process required by 1915.250. That is deeply troubling. From our perspective, many of the commissioners may not have even been aware that this was a targeted amendment originally proposed by Matt Goldbach and aimed squarely at the JCC. But I suppose it helps to have friends who chair the planning commission. We also question how staff allowed this amendment to move forward in the omnibus. It's clearly a violation of 1915.250. In closing, I respectfully ask this commission to reject these proposed amendments and allow the JCC to continue thriving as a vital valued part of Mercer Island's community fabric. Thank you.
Any other speakers?
No, Chair.
All right. The second item of regular business is Agenda Bill PCB 25-9, the 2026 Annual Docket, Proposed Amendments 1 through 9. We will now ask the project proponents to speak on their proposals. Please recall that you will have three minutes within which to speak on each proposal. Deputy City Clerk, would you please identify the proponent signed up to speak this evening and promote them to speak when it is their turn?
Mr. Chair, we have two individuals that have requested to speak to their proposed amendments. The first is Matthew Goldbach with proposed amendments 2, 3, and 4. Three minutes are allowed per amendment to speak. The second speaker is Mr. Daniel Thompson with proposed amendments 5 through 9.
Mr. Goldbach?
My name is Matthew Goldbach. I've been a resident of Mercer Island for 11 years. I, in fact, do walk around my neighborhood every single day. I walk a mile every morning, doctor's orders. The JCC is in my neighborhood. I was actually a member of the JCC for some time. I, the amendments that I made are not targeted at the JCC. In fact, it's kind of interesting. JCC has not been on my mind for quite some time. The issues that are related here relate to all of the types of organizations and how they tend to expand and how they can expand under the current rules. For that reason, I made these proposals. Some of these issues are occurring right now, not at the JCC, but at their, at the synagogue across the street, putting in a new school, which is a new undertaking and much of what I'm talking about here relates to that issue. But it's also, it relates to, it relates to the beach club, every, every organization on the island. And all I'm asking is that they live within the rules. There's no big deal here, no, no big change. I'm asking for some changes, actually clarifications, not, not changes. Minor wording changes. One of them is minor wording change to an amendment I had that passed and has been enforced for quite some time. It's strictly a question of talking about making sure that it applies to all the different organizations as opposed to just a specific set of zoning. I resent being called, being called out as some kind of predator. I think it's, it's actually, it bothers me a wee bit because the CEO of the J knows me and she would think that I'm a threat is really, I find, an exaggeration really. I can't believe that she thinks I'm a threat. I don't have a whole lot I can add to what's in my, in my proposed code amendments. They're pretty straightforward, there's nothing complicated about them. The classical objection is the city doesn't have time to look at any of this stuff and that, I hope that's not the case, in that some of these things that are happening right now will impact us for a very long time. And if we don't take action, you'll see it, you'll see it as a residence. And a problem that we have as residents is most of these actions are being taken by people that don't live here and, and don't have an interest. They don't see it every day. They don't see the traffic. They don't see the concerns at the residency. And that's the reason for these things, trying to control, control, trying to stay within the bounds that everyone agreed to. The J, the J bought into what they have, not, it's not some surprise, something new happened. It's not something anybody's trying to impose upon. You know, some of their maintenance issues, yep, they should have taken care of their maintenance. I don't really understand why, why you would single me out or anybody out. It's trying to, none of my stuff is site-specific and never has been. So that's really all I have to say. If anyone has any questions about these amendments, I'd be happy to try and address them. But other than that, I think, they speak for themselves. And I think the planning commission basically has, should take a look at it and say, hey, does that make sense or doesn't it? Should we move on it and shouldn't we? And the other is, look at timing. If we're going to wait till 2020, 2029, first of all, we'll have a whole new set of everybody. You guys won't be here and neither will, neither will the current council. And, and the problems that I'm trying to address, they'll already, it'll already happen. They'll be over. Anyway, that's it for me. Again, any questions? I'd be happy to. Nope, okay, thank you.
Next, I will speak to my amendments. First, I want to give a little history.
Chair Thompson, I think it would be appropriate if you're going to speak to your amendments if you come down to the podium.
Okay. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
All right. The Growth Management Act requires an annual docket for the Comprehensive Plan and Code Amendments. The city for many years had a docket for Comprehensive Plan Amendments, but not one for Code Amendments, which is critical. Around 2021, another lawyer and I appealed to the Growth Management Hearings Board and the city agreed to implement this annual docket for Code Amendments. Ironically, the main reason we appealed to the Growth Management Hearings Board for an annual Code Amendment docket was not because we wanted citizens to be able to file suggested amendments, especially site-specific amendments, but we wanted to stop the former director of the Development Services Group, the precursor to the Community Planning Department, from amending the Residential Development Code every other week at the end of very long council meetings at 11:00 PM, when we had just done a major overhaul in 2017 with two years of public input. The code official did not believe there needed to be Comprehensive Plan Amendments along with these Code Amendments until we also appealed that to the Growth Management Hearing Board and that was made part of the code. I have participated in the last five years of the Code Amendment docket since the process was first implemented. I propose these same amendments every year. One was adopted seven years, several years ago. About three years ago, the council added these amendments to the docket when the Residential Development Code is revisited, which was supposed to have occurred in 2020, but now I don't know when it might be. Over the years, whether the planning commission recommended my suggested amendments depended heavily on whether they were happy with my public comments about the planning commission. Last year, they were very unhappy because I was suggesting they were on the wrong path with regards to density in the Comprehensive Plan, which ended up with the old planning commission being reconstituted. I probably could raise these suggested amendments next year when we, the planning commission begins to address amendments for middle housing, at which point some of these amendments will be critical because we will actually be addressing the residential code. I wanted to file these again so that you get some view of them, so that you understand when next year, and hopefully we can get to them. Next year, there's going to be two critical issues regarding middle housing that Mayor Nice worked on for years to obtain. This has nothing whatsoever to do with the JCC. The first is a city cannot adopt development regulations that are stricter for middle housing or multiple dwellings on a residential lot than on a single-family home. And what Mayor Nice obtained, which is critical, cities are able to apply their regulatory limits, which for Mercer Island will be primarily its gross-floor area to lot area ratio and a requirement that a single dwelling on a single-family zone property gets the same regulatory limits as two, three, or four dwellings. That will be our key issue next year. Now, let me talk about the planning commission docket capacity. The planning department, in every single year this docket has come forward, has argued to the planning commission that the work plan does not allow any additional amendments to be added to the docket. Ironically, despite that warning by the planning department last year, the planning commission added a massive quasi judicial rezone of the JCC property that alone required three planning commission meetings and the temporary use permit ordinance that we just worked on for the country club and an unknown view easement ordinance that would be island-wide. To be honest, I think the planning department overstates the limited space on the planning commission's docket, and I'd like to remind all of you that at the last meeting, it lasted 15 minutes. I think the planning commission's work plan and future docket will allow for a few discrete residential suggested amendments. And I'm guessing that the city's not going to wait until 2030 for to have us review their proposed quasi judicial rezone of the city property for the public safety and maintenance building. So I don't think that we should dwell on that too much. Now, let's just take a look real quick for these, these different ordinances. The first one, the gross-floor area, this is very interesting. In 2017, we had 10 feet, because that's the industry standard. And at the last second, Dan Grouse, a council member, switched it to 12 feet because he had a 12-foot-high ceiling and he wants to, he wanted to sell his house, and we've had this 12 feet. It makes no sense. It has nothing to do with the JCC because the JCC's current structures under the residential code cannot be enlarged, but they are grandfathered. So it doesn't matter. They're not going to be impacted by this one iota. It had nothing to do with them. I've been submitting it for five years. It makes no sense to have a 12-foot ceiling height before you begin to add in bonus gross-floor area for cleristory space because you, 10 to 12 feet is a 20% increase of all structures, creates no living space whatsoever, and is the most expensive to heat and cool. And this is going to be critical next year when we start looking at lots that can have two, three, and four dwellings on them. So I think despite what I thought were some intemperate comments, this has nothing to do with the JCC. It has to do with residential development. Massing deals with the volume of a house compared to the lot. The problem that was made before the 2017 code rewrite is people would, the code would claim that something wasn't gross-floor area, but of course it was. And so you'd see the volume of the house. We should go back to a 10-foot ceiling height. The next one is pretty much similar. It was one of those late-at-night amendments by the former code official, and it exempted covered decks. The problem with that is you exempt covered decks and you put railings around them, you've basically built a room just without the windows. You have all the massing to them. For example, I have a house on a lot and we have a lot of outdoor decks, you know, the standard wood ones, no railing. If I were able to cover those, that's going to, you know, it would be so much bigger, the house, it would almost double the footprint of it. We need to be thinking next year about lots that can have two, three, and four dwellings on them. We don't want them to be able to use this to abuse, abuse that and create too much massing on the lot. The next one is, it's a little esoteric. I know I got architects, so you guys will get it. It's been very hard. So the Department of Ecology requires a 25-foot setback from the water. And we have a 25-foot and 20-foot setbacks for front and rear yard. If you were the waterfront property, you would have to have 25 feet in the front, 25 feet in the back. So the city allows them to flip that. Take the 25-foot credit on the water side and then 20 feet in the back, which is fine. But then they have a provision on steeper slopes, your garage can extend into that 20-foot reduced rear yard 10 feet. So you effectively have a 10-foot rear yard with your neighbor. I don't have a problem with them switching it. I'm just saying that if you've got a waterfront house and you've got that kind of money, you should be able to put your garage underground if you want to go into your 20-foot setback, so it, it's not visible. Okay, the next one, and I'll just finish up here. This is going to be a big one, especially because this is, Mayor Nice worked hard on this. We have to give multiple dwellings the exact same regulatory limits as a single-family home, at least. But we have a situation where we reduce gross-floor area to 40% from 45 because of the massing that occurred under the 45%, some other ones. But now we're giving 5% for any ADU. And we're going to be going to a code next year with middle housing that somebody can have two or three ADUs on a lot. So we don't want to do that. I think that this is going to be a big one for the council next year and we should probably think about it and get ahead of it, and we should eliminate a bonus for ADUs because we don't want to have bonuses for multiple dwellings. It's also kind of strange because it's based on lot size, 5% of lot size. So ironically, we're giving, I mean, at 8,400 feet, you get an ADU bonus of like 330 feet. What we're really seeing what's being done here is builders are using this to just increase the size of their house. They're not renting it, they're not using it for its intended purpose, it's just kind of being manipulated. So I think we should really think about getting rid of that. Now, 25-9, I don't know if this is still kind of valid, but we have to think about it. They reduced the covered parking from two to one for smaller houses, but you know, Mercer Island, 3,000 square feet is kind of small, but you know, not in Seattle. And that is because it'd have to be covered. And so you needed that gross-floor area for a smaller house for living. But that's not true anymore. You don't have to have, any of the parking is covered with the new state changes. So we don't need this. And I don't know if we want to have something that conflicts with the state minimums. I think we should get rid of this provision and go with the parking limits that we just adopted, you know, from the state limits. Not have one part of the island being able to have fewer onsite parking than others because we don't need it anymore because you don't need covered parking, so you can, it's not going to cut into your, your gross-floor area for your house. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Before we proceed with staff comments, I would like to circle back to the approval of the minutes that are on the agenda and take care of that.
Okay. This item of regular business is to review and consider approving the October 8 Special Meeting Minutes. Commissioners, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Accuse and a second by Commissioner Nice to approve the minutes from the October 8 Special Meeting Minutes. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing nine, would you please follow the roll?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Accuse.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gibson.
Aye.
Chair Thompson.
Aye.
Commissioner Nice.
Aye.
And Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Thank you. That brings us back to staff's presentation on the 2026 Annual Docket.
Okay. We will now ask Deputy Director Allison Van Gorp and Senior Planner Molly McGuire to present the staff reports on the proposals. They will take three minutes per proposal or a combined presentation time of 27 minutes.
Thank you. Let me just share my screen. Okay, so the annual docket is the opportunity for the public to propose Comprehensive Plan and Development Code amendments. First, the planning commission will conduct a preliminary review of the proposed items and make a recommendation to the city council. And then the city council determines which items are placed on the final docket and added to the work plan for 2026. The amendment requests can be submitted by the public, city manager, city department directors, and those amendments must be provided between September 1st and October 1st. The planning commission reviews and makes a recommendation, and then the city council will establish the docket by December 31st. The final docket determines the work plan and the resource needs for these amendments. In order for something to be added to the docket, all of these criteria must be met. So the proposal needs to be appropriately addressed through the Comprehensive Plan or the code. The city can provide the necessary resources, including staff time and budget, to address the amendment. And the proposal cannot raise any issues for something that's already on the work plan. The proposal must also serve the public interest by implementing the goals in the Comprehensive Plan or the city's vision, and the essential elements of the proposal cannot have been reviewed by the city council within the last three years. As we know, the city has several items on the work plan that have not yet received legislative review, and these items must remain on the docket until they have received some form of review. If they're not reviewed in the year that they are docketed, they will carry over into future years. So that is why we have some outstanding items from previous dockets. There's four items from the 2024 Annual Docket, which includes adding government services to the town center, permanent regulations for the legislative requirements for ADUs, middle housing, and unit lot subdivisions, and clarifying the downhill facade of a building height, and the redesignation of the SJCC and MICC properties.
Excuse me, Molly. Didn't the council add last year a provision or a proposed docket? or a proposed docket for an island-wide some type of view easement?
Yes, so that was in the 2025 annual docket item. And that included in here is the private hedge code or limiting the height of hedges to 12 feet within side yard setbacks. So those two would be considered together. And then also excluding exterior alteration of non-single-family, non-conforming structures outside of the town center in determining the legal non-conforming status during a remodel.
Molly, excuse me, just a point of order. I want to step in for a moment. I just want to remind the commission that staff have a certain allotted amount of time to address their responses. And so, much like when individuals that were presenting their amendments, they have an opportunity to present their side as well. And questions can be asked later once they finish their report. Thank you.
Okay, so we also have several interim regulations that are still in that kind of state. So the omnibus ordinance takes care of several of these, but there's still three left. That's the emergency shelters, which expires on April 1st of 2026, and then the middle housing and ADUs and unit lot subdivisions, which expire in June of 2026. Permanent regulations will need to be adopted before expiration or renewed in order to remain in compliance with these state legislative. We also have several outstanding, other outstanding items. The Growth Management Hearings Board final decision and order. Compliance is required with that by July 31st of 2026, which results in updates to the housing element and development regulations. There's also other state legislative updates that will need to be made between 2026 and 2029. And then the Shoreline Master Program periodic update is coming up with review and revisions necessary before June 30th of 2029. So review for that is expected to begin after the Growth Management Hearing Board's decision. So for your decision process, you'll consider each proposed amendment one by one, and then discuss whether the docketing criteria are met. Then a motion and roll call vote is required to finalize the recommendation to the city council. Again, as I discussed, due to the existing commitments of staff time in the work plan, staff do not recommend adding any items to the 2026 docket, which is a result of criteria two. And if a proposal is docketed, it will likely not receive review until 2029 or later, given these commitments. You can follow along with the docket proposal summary and the criteria analysis in the Planning Commission bill packet. And I'll just give a brief summary of each of the proposed amendments, and then we can move on to the discussion. So Proposed Amendment 1 was to amend the Town Center subareas and the zoning map appendix to rezone the property formerly known as the Tully's property from Town Center Subarea TC7 to Park or Public Institution. This rezone would not align with the comprehensive plan designation for that property, which is Town Center. So a comprehensive plan amendment would be required if this item were to be docketed. Amendment 2 is for a change after a conditional use permit being granted. So no CUP on a residential property can be used for any use or purpose by a separate property zoned TCCO, B, or PBZ. Amendment 3 is for the criteria for reclassifications of properties or rezones, prohibiting a non-residential structure or use in the single-family zone, including a conditional use permit from requesting or obtaining a rezone. Amendment 4 is for the parking requirements for all uses in the CO and B zones, clarifying that the parking standards in these zones do not apply to residentially-zoned properties, and eliminates the option for the code official to grant variances from the minimum parking requirements, and eliminates the option for a parking reduction. Amendment 5 is to the gross floor area, reducing the ceiling height from 12 to 10 feet before it is counted as 150% of the GFA. 6 is again for the gross floor area calculation, which would include exterior covered decks in the definition of GFA and covered purchase on the first level. 7 for garages and carports, eliminating the ability to build garages and carports within 10 feet of the property line. Yeah, on the waterfront lots. 8 is the gross floor area incentive for ADUs to limit the GFA incentives to lots 8,400 square feet or smaller. 9 is for parking requirements to reduce the threshold for requiring only two parking spaces from 3,000 square feet to 2,000 square feet. And so here's the decision process again. I won't go over it again. But let me know if you have any questions about the current work plan or any of the proposed amendments and staff comments. Thank you.
I do have one question. Would you go back to the slide that has the matrix of the docketing criteria analysis, with the different arrows and the red arrows? I'm looking down at 25-4. And under Criterion 4, serves public interest by implementing comp plan goals or support city visions. You have an X. But my understanding is the Planning Commission last meeting voted unanimously to add that to the omnibus legislation. So why did you mark that as does not serve the public interest?
This was just one of the comprehensive plan goals and policies highlighted, just for awareness there. And whether the amendment to the omnibus, I mean...
Yes. So you can see in that footnote at the bottom there, it calls out the policy from the comprehensive plan that's potentially in conflict. Encourage businesses and residential areas to explore opportunities for shared parking and other management strategies. So the comprehensive plan encourages shared parking, and then this proposal was in opposition to shared parking in certain circumstances. So we wanted to call out that that was a potential conflict with the comprehensive plan.
Yes, please.
I am one of the people who, maybe in reviewing that amendment last week, did not draw a direct line between the past. I should have, because I was on the planning commission when we said no to it. Is there a process by which we can discuss that previous action? Because a legal issue's been raised, and I'm wondering if we can ask the city attorney if there is, in fact, a conflict there?
I believe we have something in the planning commission bylaws that would prohibit us from reconsidering a decision that's already been made.
So at the time to consult with the city attorney would have been at that meeting?
Okay, thank you, yeah. I think the city council can certainly consider any advice from the city attorney when they make their final decision on that matter.
Is there anything you want to add further, Molly? Deputy Clerk, do you think we should just take these one at a time? Discuss them and then vote?
I believe that's the recommendation, is to take each proposal one at a time. You can discuss them, and then make a motion to either docket it or not docket it, or recommend it be docketed or not docketed.
All right. Why don't we begin then with item number 25-1? Does anybody want to speak in favor of this proposed amendment, suggested amendment? No, I'll just give a little background. In 2018, the council did an emergency rezone part of the Sculpture Garden, which was Linear Park, for the Tully's project through Main Street. And then they were going to incorporate a performing arts center into that. It's, the project never came to fruition. Prior in 2017, the city had negotiated $4.5 million deal with Sound Transit for commuter parking. They spent $2 million on the lot and $1 million doing the pollution due diligence, which really was well done. I mean, it's a great parcel. They got agreements from Wajdot to use their underground space for the parking, you know. And I think in some day in the future, it's going to be, you know, amazing structure. It's, you know, our gateway into light rail. But they had to pave it in 2025. Sound Transit would not, because of bad blood, would not agree to extend that 2025 date. And so by paving it, we get the parking right now. We got the $4.5 million from Sound Transit, because it was done in 2025. They're going to put in some bike lockers. So there's one other thing to consider under that Growth Management Hearing Board decision. One of the ideas, Bellevue's doing this. Bellevue is actually rejecting the upzoning and the mandatory affordable mandates, that so many of their housing targets has to be affordable. And the city may take this parcel and give it a very, very tall height limit and require that every unit in it be affordable to somebody earning between 0 and 50% median income. I don't know if they're going to do that. It's only been discussions. So I think we should leave the zoning as it is now. It's TC5, went to TC7. So I'm not in favor of this amendment. I don't think the council would be either. Anybody else have any thoughts on it? All right, would you call the roll?
I need a motion and a second. I don't...
Well, if we're not going to adopt it...
I need a motion and a second whether or not to docket amendment number one for the final 2026 docket.
All right. Does somebody want to make a motion, please?
I make a motion that we do not docket the 25-1, as indicated here on the annual docket summary proposal.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Perez to not docket 25.1. And we have a second by Commissioner Gibson. Anybody want to ask questions or make any comments before the vote? All right, would you please call the vote?
Thank you. Commissioner Accuse?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Nice?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Chair Thompson?
Aye.
And then I would like to suggest, going forward, that the motion be made prior to debate.
Sounds good. Okay, we're now to 25-2. Does anybody want to make a motion to add it to the docket or to not add it to the docket?
I'd like to make a motion to not add it to the docket.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Accuse to not add 25-2 to the docket, and a second by Commissioner Perez. Does anybody want to speak to this?
I'm happy to speak to it. This has been introduced a number of times, and each time it's been noted that the organizations and agencies that have conditional use permits provide tremendous benefit to our community. I've used the JCC, I'm not Jewish. It's been a very welcoming place for many families in the community. Many children have learned to swim there. Similar to other facilities, we're mostly single-family residential, like very, very huge amount of single-family residential. And there are very few community spaces. So I think having a little bit of grace and flexibility in how people use space and apply and reapply for permits, I think the city would want that for their property. And particularly when community resources provide such tremendous benefits, I just think it sends a really negative message to people who bring really great resources to our community.
Commissioner Perez?
If I may add, I wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Accuse. I think that the activation of the water, the cultural centers that exist here on the island right now are part of that conditional use within residential zones. And I think the island would be an extraordinarily different place without those exceptions and conditions, and the right to be able to negotiate and move through a process via the conditional use permit. So just want to get on the record on that.
I just want to clarify some things about this. What this states is that a property that is not zoned residential, so that excludes all conditional use permits on the island. So let's understand what we're talking about. We are not talking about a conditional use permit. The council, four years ago, adopted amendment that says a conditional use permit cannot use an adjacent residentially-zoned property for conditional use permit uses unless it opens up its cup and incorporates it. So what we are talking about here has nothing to do with cups, because they are on residentially-zoned property. What this says, and this actually goes not to the JCC, but to the Hertzel, I believe, project. It says that if you have a commercial property, do you want them to be able to metastasize into the residential zone? Because those properties are cheaper. And begin moving their uses, parking, storage, whatever it is, onto a residential lot during a time that we supposedly have a housing crisis, we're being axed to upzone? And these commercial properties, you know, it's blurring the lines of the zoning. I think that our two speakers tonight misunderstood that they are on residentially-zoned property. This does not affect the JCC, because it's residentially-zoned. So I don't know how they think it could impact them. If they wanted to use a residentially-zoned property that's not part of the cup, they can open up their cup and incorporate it. This is about only commercial and business zone properties being able to use a residential property for commercial purposes. So for example, you have a zoning line. Zoning lines are usually a pretty bright line. Let's say you have an office tower or office building next to a residential, like Mercerdale. Mercerdale, what a good place. Should one of the good, you know, like the Farmers Building be able to buy lots in Mercerdale for parking or other uses from the Farmers Building? You know, so I think that people are getting confused about that this impacts our conditional use permits. It doesn't. If you read it carefully, it says that only, this only applies to town center, commercial, B, or PBZ properties. So I don't, I mean, I, as you guys know from our last meeting and other meetings, I have a concern about the conditional, not the conditional use, but the commercial, the commercial and the town center and other properties extending in, and basically extending the zoning, blurring the zoning lines between them and residential properties. So that's why I would vote to put this before the council, because it doesn't affect conditional use permits, because those are by definition on residentially-zoned properties. Any, yes, Commissioner Nice?
Chair Thompson, I'm at a little bit of a disadvantage here, because I don't have the history you have. So is, are these, are there examples of this occurring or have occurred in the past of what you're talking about? Like the example of... Like the example of farmers expanding into adjacent lots, putting parking on? Is this going on? Is it?
My guess is what this is driving this is the development of the B-zone property next to Hertzel. And Hertzel is a residentially zoned property. And they want to switch all the parking from the B-zone property to the residentially zoned property with the cup. There's an upcoming design review hearing before the hearing examiner. So I don't know if this issue is going to be there with him or not, whether he's going to review it. I think he reserved it until this upcoming hearing.
And in that case, what is on this lot that they're trying to put the parking on now?
Well, there is a parking lot. It's the synagogue parking. So they wanted to cooperative parking. They want to take the parking from the commercial B-zone and switch it to the parking on the synagogue lot.
Which is already parking.
It has parking, yes.
And the people around that, that own other property have always understood it was parking?
Yes, right.
Yeah. Okay.
It's been a parking lot. They're just going to combine the two parking lots onto one.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Okay.
Back to the amendment. Is this saying you can't do that or can, can't?
I think it says you can't. You would no longer be able to do that.
Right, okay.
Yes, please.
Yeah, regarding the idea of housing and a housing issue. If I recall correctly, in JCC proposal we reviewed previously, one objective was possibly to consider senior housing. And this is something that our city has not come up with money to provide. It's a little bit embarrassing and I think the fact that some of our community organizations are willing to consider things like this is just a huge benefit to our community and to seniors in our community. Because I don't, I don't see the city coming up with any housing real quick that we're funding. So I disagree with the theme that there's negative impacts on housing if this is, in terms of the housing crisis, if this is, if this is not moved through.
Fair enough. I mean, if it were a residential lot and then it was converted to parking, you would lose the housing on that, but that is the intent anyway. So is there anything further or should we vote on the motion?
This seems very specific to certain circumstances and limited. And I mean, one of the things we're talking about is amount of time we have prioritizing things. I don't, that's probably going to weigh into my decision.
Excellent, yeah. I think we're ready for the roll call.
The motion before you is to not docket amendment two for the final 2026 docket. Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Chair Thompson?
Nay.
Commissioner Neese?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gibson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Accuse?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-1.
Okay. Do we have a motion to either adopt or reject 25-3?
I'd like to make a motion to reject 25-3.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Accuse to reject or not docket 25-3, seconded by Commissioner Perez. So we, would one of you two like to discuss it?
Yeah, I'd be happy to kick off comments. My comment on this is that I think it really hamstrings the city in terms of zoning policy. We have a number of residential uses, like church facilities, school facilities, private school facilities. I could see a future where more specificity was wanted around zones for those facilities. And I just don't think it's right to hamstring the city's ability to rezone as needed.
Commissioner Perez?
Thank you. I'm just going to wholeheartedly concur. I think that, you know, we need to trust the process. We need to have tools and venues and clear, a clear decision-making process within the hands of the plans examiners and the reviewers. And I also feel like this is removing some of the opportunities for that consideration.
Anybody else have any comments? Nope. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. The motion is to not docket amendment three. Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Accuse?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
And Commissioner Neese?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. The next one is, do we have a motion to adopt or not adopt proposed amendment 25-4?
Can I ask staff a question before considering this? Can you clarify the differences between this and what we discussed in our last meeting? There's some similar language? I don't know.
I don't have the language from the last meeting in front of me, but I do know that they were, the two items were very similar in intent in terms of limiting that ability to have shared parking on residential parcels that are next to COB or PBZ.
Okay, I think given the context, I'd like to make a motion to not include 25-4 in the docket.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Accuse to not docket 25-4 and a second by Commissioner Perez. Would either one of you like to discuss this?
Yeah, I'd be happy to kick off again. I think context matters and in our discussion last week, it had slipped my mind that this item was docketed many years in a row. And because we hadn't seen the docket yet, I didn't see it coming forth again and then recall it was part of a lot of previous discussions. So it feels a little slipped in last meeting to me and I blame myself solely for not catching that. But had I had that context in mind, I would have voted differently. So I want to take this opportunity to propose that motion, that's why.
Anybody else? Commissioner Perez?
Just going, I mean, for me, the opportunity to say that, and thank you staff for talking about this conflicts with the comprehensive plan was enough determination on my end in order to make my decision associated with this. So just want to add that.
I'm going to support the motion because I think that we essentially included this in the omnibus legislation. And I think it's kind of important and we discussed this on October 8. My impression, my understanding from reading it is MICC 19.04.040 with these different subsections already holds this. I don't think that this is an amendment. I think this is a clarification. Again, we may get some clarification on that from the hearing examiner because he's going to revisit this, I think, I don't know, in the upcoming design review on October 31. But anyway, my statutory construction analysis of it is this is actually what the code says. We didn't do anything different two weeks ago, but I don't think we need to add this in addition. It's just duplicative. Anything else?
To speak to what my understanding of what the last meetings or two meetings ago, I guess, our amendment only applied to the multifamily section of the municipal code and then this would expand to the business and commercial zones. I think the reason I supported it back then and I generally support the sentiment here is that there seems to be a loophole that would allow a commercial property owner, commercially zoned property owner to purchase residential properties adjacent to their property and then start using that to satisfy requirements of their commercial property. And I don't necessarily agree with that approach or having that opportunity exist within the code.
Well, I think you're talking to the prior, prior suggested amendment that was.
This was specifically about satisfying the parking requirements of an adjacent property.
This one that we're looking at is basically it, you know, one of the things we discussed at the last meeting is the council eliminated the design commission, but we never had an opportunity. I mean, the code is filled with discretion for town center, commercial, B, and PBZ zones, which is fine. What we were saying is the language in that section that gives the code official broad discretion to reduce parking minimums on those zones from 25 to 100% did not apply to residentially zoned properties. That's what, that we did. And I think that is what this amendment is basically just mimicking.
Yeah, I guess, I guess to clarify, there are, there are multiple portions to this docket item. There is the discretion on variances in and of itself. There's also the cooperative parking piece, which we combine, how parking is, can be shared across two adjacent properties. So.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, can we get a roll call on 25-4? And can you please remind the commission that this is to not add 25-4 to the docket?
As Chair Thompson said, yes, this is to not docket amendment four for the final 2026 docket. So Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gibson?
Nay.
Commissioner Neese?
Aye.
Commissioner Accuse?
Aye.
And Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-1.
All right, moving on to the next one. This is amendment 25-5, my amendment. I'll make a motion to add this to the docket. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Chair Thompson to add 25-5 to the docket and there is a second by Chair Gibson. Since I proposed the motion, I'll just speak really quickly to it. I've already explained to you why the basis behind it, especially when we get into the middle housing. I want to also address some comments that were made by representatives of the JCC. The JCC's redevelopment plans rest upon a rezone to commercial office because as they are right now, their building does not comply with the residential standards. So they need the commercial zoning to be able to do that. This doesn't have anything to do with it because the JCC's envelope for their structures on their property is fixed. I mean, they can't enlarge their building. So they're grandfathered in. Nobody's going to require them to lower ceiling heights or count the clerestory space into their gross floor area because it's fixed. You know, the JCC is fixed. If it gets a commercial zoning, that it has the ability to go on and use those regulatory limits. If it doesn't, it's pretty much limited as a conditional use in the residential zone. This has nothing to do, I filed this years before the JCC pursued its plans to rezone to commercial and do its redevelopment plan. This has to do with the fact that if you give a structure 20% more volume, you're going to have a 20% larger structure or structures on that property. You know, you can't just come in there and say, since we're not counting as a gross floor area, it doesn't apply or it doesn't exist. It does. So next year, if somebody is going to go in there and say, hey, I'm going to put three or four dwellings on a property, do we want those dwellings to be 20% larger than they should be? And how does that benefit anyway? It doesn't increase actual living space. This is at the ceiling. And it also increases the heating and cooling costs. So this is something that I could have waited. I wanted to raise it now. I think that this is something that we are really going to be focusing on next year. And that is making sure that the regulatory limits for single-family house and multiple dwellings is the same and restricted. Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Accuse?
I'd like to speak to this as somebody who has, lives in a extremely well-designed home and has a high ceiling in one room. I kind of want to reject the notion that if you have one ceiling that's 12 feet, you're making the entire, you know, doubling or whatever. You know, the math there was a little funky to me. I think that it's really important for architects and designers to have some latitude in design so we don't end up with hideous cookie cutter development. And I think that high ceilings are wonderful and our family has gone to great lengths. I don't know what the maximum R value is for insulation. Maybe one of our architects can tell me. But we spent a lot of time finding really, really, really good insulation and our heating bills are just fine. So I think there are ways that you can, whether it's zone heating or timed heating or whatnot, there are ways that you can offset your desire for a nice looking space so that you're not creating climate change. That's, that's my thought, I think. So I am against this.
I would echo some of those points. Also point out that designing a structure for solar orientation often involves things like shed roofs, which might have a low side on one end and a higher side on the other. And, you know, if you start it at eight feet, which is a very sort of normal, common ceiling height, going up to 12 with like a shed roof isn't really that, a lot of space to work with for a slope roof and getting solar panels in the right orientation. I too have a space, a few spaces on our upper level that I measured before coming here. And my peak is at 12 feet, but my bottom point is that in some cases is low as four in a room that's tucked into the roof and a little bit higher elsewhere. So there's many applications where a taller peak and as an architect would also like to have a little bit of relief from everything at 10 feet. It feels very static. One space, maybe an entry or a grave room at a higher ceiling height gives some articulation. There's also areas, I think, like I'd have to look at the codes, but you go into areas around Kirkland that have very strict sort of 25-foot ceiling heights. The architecture seems to really, it's not exactly the same issue, but architecture tends to look very consistent and boring and bland and a little bit cookie cutter, as Kate was saying. So, and just off the top of my head from other jurisdictions that we've worked in, 10 feet's on the low side, 12 feet's on the low side. I think, I think, sorry, forgive me if I'm wrong, but Bellevue has somewhere, they start counting around 15 or 16. Seattle, I don't think it does any double counting of higher spaces. Find a lot of that is, particularly if you're trying to put more density into a lot, is probably going to become somewhat self-regulated to the design process, to the height limit, to your lot coverage. And I mean, I'd be curious to see past examples of what's been permitted recently that may be, that we could sort of. That we could sort of explore, okay. Ten feet versus twelve feet, how would this have changed the design? In specific examples here. I'd be curious to see, you know, what's actually going on on Mercer Island.
Okay, anybody else? Yes. If I may, just a question for staff. In our prep materials, I think this comment is for the next handful of items. It says in twenty twenty two, the city council directed staff to include consideration of this item in the residential development standards analysis. Is it a part of the work plan at some point in the future after we get through the glut of items on our. Hot agenda to do a RDS analysis?
Yes, that remains on our work plan. As you might imagine, it's been significantly delayed over the last five years. It continues to be. Sort of on the back burner with everything else that needs to be done with, you know, state driven timelines. I would note that, you know, we do need to do permanent regulations for the middle housing and ADUs, and that will all be amendments to. Nineteen oh two in the code, which is the residential section. So it may make sense to look at these kind of together since we'll be making those amendments to the same portions of the code.
Okay, so it it sounds like it's not a matter of if that RDS analysis happens, it's just more when and how far into the future.
Yes.
When it gets. And so does this item need to be doctored for it to be considered in that analysis?
It's already planned to be considered based on that previous city council direction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Should we have the roll? It's based on my motion to add it to the docket. And if it doesn't pass, then we'll need a motion to not add it. Is that correct?
No.
It just fails.
It just fails.
All right, please call the roll.
Thank you. Commissioner Gibson.
Nay.
Commissioner Cuse.
Nay.
Commissioner Nice.
Nay.
Chair Thompson.
Aye.
Commissioner Perez.
Nay.
Motion fails four one.
Alrighty, now we're moving to twenty five six. This is my motion. And this would. Would include exterior covered decks in the duction in the calculation of gross floor area. Does anybody want to make a motion one way or the other?
I'd like to make a motion to not add this to the docket.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Akuse to not docket it, seconded by Commissioner Nice. Would either one of you like to speak about it?
Well, I in this area, I find that covered decks are some of the most used outdoor spaces. Surprisingly, in the summer, it gets very hot in the sun. And I find that a lot of people who have, particularly in Seattle where I live. And do a lot of practicing in architecture. Townhouses with roof decks that have no cover, people constantly contact us saying, can I possibly? With the height limit I have, put some cover up here. It's just unusable in the summer, and that's when I want to use it. And then in. Seasons like now where it's nice and. Where it's, you know, could be rainy or covered decks provide. Protection if you're grilling outside, if you have outdoor furniture, it just makes it a lot easier to keep outdoor furniture outside. There's a lot of reasons why we like covered decks. I wonder though, because as you say, Chair Thompson. They're kind of like building a house, but without the windows. Almost as expensive as building indoor space. And in that. Way, they're almost self-regulated that people don't go overboard. People generally, at least in my experience. Include these, but not to an excessive amount, just because they have other priorities. Money only goes so far. Construction cost has gone up a tremendous amount. I haven't seen structures where. In other jurisdictions where it's not counted like Seattle, where people are just going crazy, building outdoor spaces that are covered. So I personally feel it's probably going to be largely self-regulated.
Okay, I I I understand what you're saying. I guess my my point would be if it's self-regulated. How would it harm it then adding it to the calculation of gross floor area?
As you increase density, I suspect that designs would want to take advantage of. The gross flora for units. It's hard to say that without looking at examples and seeing how it would apply to lots that are larger, maybe. Others have my experience on this, but that would be my guess.
If I could be recognized, Chair.
Pardon?
We have a covered deck and it's not all about my house today, but. It is really usable as room space, maybe two months out of the year and the rest of the year it's. You know, maybe we'll go exercise out there or something to stay out of the rain, but stay cool. I think there's a big difference in gross floor area versus lot coverage. And we are penalized for lot coverage for that already. So you are, you you do have some restriction there, and that's a way that it is self-regulating. We can't build anything else on our lot. We can't put an ADU on our lot because we have a covered deck. So I really don't think people are going to go crazy with it because they just can't, you know, you can't have more than. Thirty five percent sixty five. There's some out there anyhow.
Okay.
And they are very expensive.
The only thing I was going to add is, you know, impervious and impervious cover, you know, is a high limitation, the forty percent lot lot coverage. There there's a lot of limitations, and I think people will will tend to prioritize. The interior interior covered, you know, fully habitable space year round. However, the 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 benefits of having any sort of exterior access undercover, especially in our environment, I think is is enormous. So I would be very reticent to pull that back.
Okay, I mean, I just want to make sure that my my proposed amendment is not to ban. Outdoor. Outdoor parks.
I think it's controlled by other. By other, like lot coverage, other pervious services.
Okay, can you call the roll then on twenty five six? That would a motion to not docket it.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Nice.
Aye.
Chair Thompson.
No.
Vice Chair Gibson.
Aye.
And Commissioner Cuse.
Aye.
Motion passes four one.
Okay, next up, do we have a motion to not adopt? Or add to the docket twenty five seven, seven or two added?
I'll make a motion to not add it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Nice to not add twenty five second, seconded by Commissioner Akuse.
I'm sorry, Chair, who made the motion?
It was Commissioner Nice.
Thank you.
I'll just give a a quick blurb on this. It's kind of esoteric. It's it's, you know, I've seen a few houses where this happens. I don't know what's going to happen with this now that you don't have to have covered parking. I mean, I would be really concerned if you can go have a ten foot rear yard. Because you have covered parking into it. It may be something that we address next year. I mean. It just seems that a waterfront house already gets a benefit where they're able to flip. Their twenty five foot setback. And now they only have twenty feet, which is the distance between the other house. That's what the whole point of a yard is. That's why we have the twenty five yards where the houses, you know, butt up against each other. And if, you know, if if the rule said that you had to put your garage completely under grade on these steep slopes. Then I wouldn't have any problem with that. I mean, that's completely below grade. This doesn't technically require a garage. Below grade, and now that you don't have to have covered parking. I doubt that you would probably have surface parking, but you could on a waterfront house. They might decide that they want to have some additional parking in the back, like gravel parking, you know, plus a garage. I just think that it's not very, very fair to the upwater second house behind them. You know, where they're supposed to have a twenty five foot buffer. And and then they're. Twenty foot, and now it's twenty feet, and then it's ten feet. So that is my thinking on this. It's. I've I've seen a couple of it where it's done, but I don't know how much it's done. Anybody else have any comments?
Just for clarification, Chair, are you saying that you're concerned about the front yard? Encroachment associated with the garage. In a front yard setup where there is no road? I'm I'm sorry, I'm just trying to follow.
Right, there's no, you have two houses abutting each other.
In the front yard?
Yeah. And and so it's been flipped on the waterfront house. Where it should be twenty five, you know, on a normal house, if you didn't take away the water. And take away the slope, you would have. Your house in front of you would have twenty five foot yard, you know, that would be their setback, twenty five feet. You would have yours. And now it's going to twenty feet, and then if they go into that twenty feet, they can go ten feet into it. It's just, it's. I don't think that when this code provision was written, they saw the combination of the two together. That that's all. How many it would apply to, I I really don't know. I think, you know, you could make an argument, look, people who build houses on the waterfront on Mercer Island are going to put it. Pretty much underground anyway. But not necessarily.
Well, Seattle has a similar provision, but it's. It's five feet, although I'd have to look now to see if that's been reduced depending on the circumstance, but. We did a house a few years ago, perhaps a few years ago, just wrapping up, that has that situation that's five feet reversed the front and. Rear so that the garage could be very close to that upper line. In this case, the owner actually owned a parcel next to it, so it wasn't affecting somebody else, but. The waterfront is. A situation which has a lot of unique circumstances, and so it's difficult for me to. Cherry pick something and. Not understand all the nuances of. Of that decision. I feel like this would need a lot more discussion to understand whether it was a positive or negative change.
Okay, I mean, that's one of the reasons I I filed these and raised them, you know, so. People think, and it it is, I will admit, on on Mercer Island, this really only applies to very steep slopes. So you're not going to have, you know, a fully, a full garage above grade. Into that ten feet. You're going to have heart at most. But I don't know how it's going to change, you know, when we go to. Not needing covered parking or additional parking. That's probably more likely.
Yeah, well. In steep lots, those few feet. Often make a big difference in. Feasibility, cost. Underground structure that supports these houses on steep slopes. Ten feet is can be a huge distance, so. It could have a negative impact on on a lot of waterfront lots or on some waterfront lots.
It could, but part of a code is to consider not just the person who's building, but their neighbors. Okay, I think that any more discussion? Can you please call the roll on the motion to not docket amendment twenty five seven?
Thank you. Commissioner Cuse.
Aye.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gibson.
Aye.
Commissioner Nice.
Aye.
And Chair Thompson.
Nay.
Motion passes four one.
Okay, our next motion is docket twenty five dash eight. Proposed by me on gross floor area incentives for ADUs. Do I have a motion to either docket or not docket this?
I move to docket item amendment twenty five dash eight.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Gibson to docket twenty five eight. And a second by Commissioner Nice. I'll just sense is my motion. I'll try to be brief here. I think I explained it before. To be fair, I think next year when we take this issue up and where I think the council's. Going to at least, you know, where Mayor Nice was going on this is we're going to probably be looking at getting rid of any. Gross floor area incentives for ADUs because if you look at the middle housing. Temporary regulations, the first thing the council did is take advantage of the one parking space per unit. And you can assume why. And so I I would not be surprised if actually next year this discussion isn't. The reason I put this in here originally is because it made no sense. You're you're giving. The way it works with the percentage, the larger the house. The larger the ADU, I mean, and so do you really need that for a four four thousand square foot house? Does it need additional? And I don't, you know, Mercer Island, if you read the permit bulletin, there are so many, I mean, so few ADUs. And what I've heard anecdotally is they're not being added to rent. They're they're being added just to take advantage of that, so. We could add it and go forward, but I also think that next year. We're actually going to be debating whether to remove the incentive completely. Now, I'll also give you one other comment. Sorry about this, and this, this. Mayor Nice will probably raise this. He will come forward and say, yes, but if you get a house that builds a. House and ADU on it. They've exhausted their their units, you know, because you can't then go to the three or four because you've. Under the new middle housing, you've taken the house in the ADU. Because you've used up your gross floor area, so you're not going to see multiple units, but. It's going to be a complicated discussion next year. This one is pre-middle housing. Anybody else have some?
This predates middle housing.
This amendment, you know, I made this years ago. This came from the two thousand seventeen code. And then when the middle housing came in and then I've, you know, the temporary regulations from the council, where they're adding parking for each unit. Doesn't have to be covered, you know, that you put on on the multiple dwellings and. The direction that they took in the comprehensive plan is pretty clear where they're going on that. So. We could add it. I don't know if the council's going to do it or just sit there and say you'll be discussing it next year anyway, because this will definitely be part of the middle housing. Anybody else have?
Yes, Commissioner Gibson. I I I think this is germane to the middle housing that is coming up. I I've heard about this topic multiple times. Both in the elections that are going on and just in discussions about. The state level legislations that are. Coming through, so I. You know, at at very least, I think it is a good idea for us to put this in front of the council, give them the option to docket it. And and. Let them decide, but I think coming out of the planning commission, it it makes sense to include this.
If I could be recognized, Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Akuse.
I think taking this out of context of all the other things we'd be doing with middle housing is inappropriate personally. And also just, I want to share that my characterization of folks using ADUs, they're using them for. Retired parents. I know a couple widows that live in them. I know a couple of people with disabled children, adult children who live in them. And some people have accessibility requirements associated with those. You know, and for a big lot, for some people, maybe it's in character with the lot to not have a tiny house. I think. I think that the city has is dealing with ramifications of a lawsuit for not being generous enough in our regulations. I think that our current mayor is not going to be our mayor next year. They have not elected to run for office again. I think there's going to be a huge change in the council coming up. So I would propose that for all of these things, we consider them in the context of the whole. And in that sense, we have realistic studies of what's actually happening in these properties as opposed to um our own personal experience, because we all have different lived experience. And I think that comes to bear in these discussions. I just don't think it's appropriate to consider these uh things as a one-off in advance.
I mean, just to comment, I I understand.
Point of order, this is not supposed to be a discussion back and forth between people. Can we?
All right.
Can the clerk or somebody kind of help us with our Roberts rules?
Are there any other uh comments?
Uh, if I can add just a quick comment, if I may. The the, yeah, the 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 key issue that I have with this is the uh is the R eight point four. So the eighty-seven, eighty-four hundred square feet is is um is one of the smaller lots on on Mercer Island and um would be highly restrictive to a majority uh of the of the lot sizes. Actually, I probably shouldn't say that, but I believe the majority of the lot sizes will on Mercer Island uh in terms of the waterfronts being zone twelve or or the nine-point-six. So um, yeah, I just think it's 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 too restrictive.
Yeah, Commissioner Gibson?
Can I clarify what? I understand that this would keep the incentive in place for the smaller lots, remove the incentive for the larger lots.
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm saying that every lot should have the opportunity of of building the ADUs, the ADUs.
Right. Could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Chair, and just as a uh to address Commissioner Accuse's um question statement or request. It is important, especially in this type of meeting, but in all meetings, that we we observe the round robin approach so that every person has an opportunity to speak before another person gets a second opportunity to to speak, so. Thank you. Vice Chair Gibson?
Sorry, can you remind me?
The motion, the motion that was made was by Gibson, seconded by Nice to docket amendment twenty-five eight for the final twenty twenty-six docket.
Oh, yeah, that was my motion. Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Nay.
Commissioner Accuse?
Nay.
Vice Chair, excuse me, uh Chair Thompson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Nice?
Nay.
Motion fails three, two. Yes, three, two.
All right, uh final motion uh or a final suggested amendment is twenty-five nine. I think you could all read it. Do we have a motion to uh add or not add this to the docket?
I'll make a motion to not add it.
Is there a second?
Second it.
All right, we have a motion to not add twenty-five nine by Commissioner Accuse, seconded by Commissioner Nice. Would somebody like to speak to twenty-five nine?
I'll just share uh briefly if I may be recognized, Chair.
Yes, please.
We had discussed this in the previous iteration of the planning commission, kind of ad nauseam. I think especially given the lawsuit by Futurewise against the city. And I know I'm not a legal counsel for the city here, but we can't, we can't create so many standards that people don't actually implement our our ideas for how we can uh help with housing and help in increase the volume of housing that's being produced. So I think that this is counter to that. And um I also think that the family is changing in the United States of America and in here in Seattle. I mean, people used to have uh three, four, five kids. Most people are having one or two tops. I think families as a smaller, a lot of people are going to one-car families. I know tons of people who live in Seattle, even that have multiple children that have one-car families. Light rail's coming any second now. So I don't want uh, you know, something that's built in uh transit-oriented development to be restricted to to having to have two cars if people really aren't even going to use one in some cases.
Well, uh, anybody else? I I'll just give my comments. This is again, uh, you know, a pre middle housing uh twelve-twenty amendment. I mean, I I would like to point out that the Growth Management Hearing Board decision is uh about uh our affordability mandates, which have to be in the town center. So this isn't really about the town center. It only applies, you know, to the residential areas as nineteen point oh two. Again, I think next next year uh we will be going over this. I know that the council's temporary uh middle house ordinances require a parking spot per unit. I don't know if you can have something that's different, you know, for this, for a single house. Well, I guess we'll be discussing it uh next year. When kind of like the same with the ADU, are we going to just get rid of any type of bonuses or incentives and just go that way? Or are we going to have these kind of uh little quirks in the code that one-size-house gets more parking or more uh ADU or one less? So uh I think we'll be revisiting it, so, you know, I'm not going to jump out a window. Anybody else? Okay, uh Deputy Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to not docket twenty-five nine.
Thank you. Chair Thompson?
Aye. I mean, nay, separate nay.
Vice Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Accuse?
Aye.
And Commissioner Nice?
Aye.
Motion passes for one.
Okay, um, I believe now we have to move uh to a overall motion. So Planning Commission uh votes on a recommendation to the coun- council. So Commissioners, may I have a motion to authorize staff to prepare a recommendation to the city council on the docket proposals to include in the final docket?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Perez to authorize staff to prepare a recommendation to the city council on the docket proposals to include in the final docket, seconded by Commissioner Gibson. Any discussion? Uh, please call the roll.
Commissioner Accuse?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Chair Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Nice?
Aye.
And Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes five zero.
Okay, um, other business. Uh, now we move to other business. Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just, during all that discussion, I'm just going to clarify one thing that was said about the Futurewise litigation just because I'm going to be looking at those transcripts during that litigation. So there was a statement made that affordable housing has to be in the town center. I'm not sure if that was, you know, the intent there, but that is not correct.
Oh, okay.
Clarify that.
Um, I I'm confused and uh I thought that um our affordability mandates, the one thousand seventy-three, that does not have to be uh in the town center or multifamily zone.
Council will be looking at all its options.
All right. Thank you. Uh, other business, is there a staff report this evening?
Just a very brief one. First, Chair, I just wanted to ask if you could stay after the meeting for a second. Molly's been diligently recording all the motions and updating the recommendation. So we'll just ask you to sign that here in person if you've got a moment after the meeting. Um, and then next, uh, we've just had one meeting remaining this year. Um, it's going to be a special meeting on November nineteenth. And at that meeting, we will be holding the public hearing on the rezone of the City Hall and Public Works parcels. I think Deb has already canceled the other regularly scheduled this meetings this year. They were conflicting with holidays and we don't think it's going to be necessary to hold a meeting in December since we will be wrapping up all the business that is pending here at the moment um in that meeting on the nineteenth. All right, and that's it for me unless there's any questions.
Okay, there being no other business to come before the planning commission. The time is now seven forty PM and the meeting is concluded. As a reminder to Commissioners, please stay seated until city staff has terminated the broadcast.